2023, specially called Metropolitan Planning Commission to order. I want to thank everybody for coming down. The first thing that we need to do, commissioners, is you have the agenda in front of you, and so we need to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt? There's a motion to adopt in a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? No? Ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. And so before we get to the recognition of the council members, I do want to acknowledge our law director. Mr. Wally Dietz is here. Thank you for being here, sir. We'll probably lean on you some if we have questions, and so we just want to say thank you for being here. We really do appreciate you coming down and taking the time to visit with us. So, next is the recognition of the council members, and as we always follow our tradition, we recognize you as we all see you guys come in. And so I saw Councilwoman Stiles first, and so do you want to come up and speak now and/or wait until? We'll do what you would like to do, council lady.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Chair.
Welcome.
Always good to be back. So I wanted to speak on the proposed amendment for the 17 and 3 version of the map, and I am in favor of it. It does give back Millridge Park, which is currently, 75% of that currently is in my district now. I would like to maintain that. We have a Phase 1 still isn't complete. Phase 2 has to get funded, and there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. So better to keep it where it is than to shift it over into another district. So I would appreciate it if you are considering that, to consider this amendment. And also, Mr. Claxton, is it possible to show the 15 and 5 map, please?
And commissioners, we'll go over these items, but this is good to, so we know what the council is talking about.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So 15 and 12, there are actually two pieces that were originally going to be a part of what was supposed to be District 32 this fall, one of which was the Starwood property, and then the commercial properties that are right next door to it. There's no population in those two parcels. So I would love to consider that as a possible amendment to get those, well, Starwood off the ground, because there's been a need and a request for several years to develop that property, and I think that there is a plan afoot, so. Thank you very much, because I can't see where it goes up there, but we appreciate it.
Thank you, council lady. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. And so next, I saw Council Lady Berkeley Allen. Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for what you do. I know how hard you all are working. I was coming to listen to the masses that I expected to be here speaking, but I think I got to hear them Tuesday night, and we took their message to heart. So I'm just here to thank you all for all the hard work that you've done. I think the second set of plans reflects a lot of great public input, and I think the collection of neighbors does a better job than I can do trying to make further suggestions to what you've done, although I missed the little Pikachu that our district sort of was for a while there. But I think the plans that you have before you are better than the plans that you started with, and that if we had six months, we could develop some really great plans if we did have to go down to 20. But the fact that you all have done this work in a week is remarkable. I do think we need to acknowledge publicly that this is a process that should take six months. So thank you all so much for the work you've done, and I look forward to listening to hearing your debate.
Thank you, council lady. Next, Mr. Councilman Swope.
With sincerest respect.
No comment from Councilman Swope, but it was sincere. Thank you, Councilman, for coming down. We appreciate it. Good to see you. All right. Seeing no other council members, we are on to Item D, which is the items to be considered. And commissioners, we are here in a specially called meeting, and so a couple of things before we get started. The director wants to say a few things, and then also from Tara, our legal counsel, and she's going to kind of remind us about why we're here. And then the law director is here. When we get to discussion, if we have any questions or any of that, the law director will be here. So Director? And this is before the presentation. Then we'll hear the presentation, and then we'll open it up for public hearing, and then we'll deliberate. Okay. Director?
First, I want to thank each one of you. We've had some heavy agendas recently, and your volunteers, and we're grateful for all of your work and service to the city and for being here. Second, I do want to acknowledge the council members who have been good and, I think, very understanding with the staff and the work that the department needed to prepare and the work we needed to do over the last 30 days. And our legal counsel will describe that again for you, what the law says. But I think many council members have been supportive of the department, which we really appreciate. We've heard certainly from many members of council, as Councilmember Allen just mentioned, that there's a desire for more time, and we've gotten a lot of accolades for the work that we've done, but we've also gotten suggestions for how we can improve our work in the future, such as around language translation services and things like that, and we take that to heart. But please know that the staff has done everything we can to abide by the principles and the requirements in the law, and then the standards that we hold the department to in terms of public engagement and technical analysis. So I'm very proud of the team and their work. And so with that, I would just ask that our legal counsel, if it's okay with you, Chairman, do you want to go that way, or you want me to?
Yeah, I'll recognize her. And before I do, since the law director is here, I do want to give a plug for our legal counsel, because we've put her on the spot a few times here lately. And so I feel like, I just want to say she does excellent work, and we really appreciate her to help us and advise us, so I do want to say that. So, counselor?
Thank you, Chair. And commissioners, tonight you're here for a very important task, something which we do not take lightly, and I know this is going to be something that you won't take lightly. So just to reiterate or to remind you of the law, that was passed effective March 9th of 2023. The planning commission has 30 days from the effective date of the Act to establish district boundaries using the most recent federal census to ensure that a reapportionment maintains substantially equal representation based on population and otherwise complies with the United States and Tennessee constitutions and state and federal law. So your task tonight is to decide on those districts, and those will be presented to council for approval.
So, counselor, it's your opinion that to meet the law, we really do need to pass something tonight? Is that correct?
That's correct. We have a compliance date. As I said, it went into effect on March 9th, and we were given 30 days. And so we're right up on our deadline at this point. So yes, we need you guys to act tonight.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. All right. Director, ready for the presentation? All right. Commissioners, presentation. Greg?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Greg Claxton with Metro Planning Department. I'll be presenting on staff recommendation for the planning commission to comply with HB 48, SB 87. Staff recommendation is to recommend draft council district boundaries at two configurations, 15 districts with five at large. Proposal B with amendments that I will present tonight. And then 17 districts with three at large. Proposal B with amendments that I'll present tonight. As a reminder, as legal counsel just said, we comply with a variety of criteria from different sources, the metro charter, state law, federal law, and then just traditional redistricting principles or best practices. We seek to get council districts that are relatively close to one another in population, that are relatively compact and contiguous. We try to keep people in the districts that they have been in historically, so historical continuity. We comply with the Voting Rights Act, and we respect communities of interest. As you'll see, as we go through the amendments in particular, all of these criteria are in tension with one another. Sometimes we kind of have to push them together as best we can to get reasonable working districts. We released the draft maps for both configurations on Friday, March 24th. We posted them online with an interactive viewer, an online survey. In the time that the two Proposal A maps were online, they received approximately 9,000 views. We think these are individual views, not total page views, so every person who looked at them was counted once in that 9,000. The following Monday, March 27th, we began a string of community meetings, starting at Hadley Park. Then Tuesday, we were here at planning offices. On Wednesday, we were at the Southeast Community Center, though we had to cut that event short in the evening. Thursday, we went to Madison. And then on Monday, we were back at the Southeast Community Center and also at the West Precinct. Also this week, on Tuesday, as you heard, council had a public hearing on the resolution that would direct the planning commission to prepare one or more district configurations. That resolution was withdrawn, as has been said tonight. I think that does not change the planning commission's deadline to comply with the law. And then yesterday, we released Proposal B. Obviously, this is a very, very tight timeframe. We released it at approximately 11:00 a.m. online and had comments open until midnight. We were also here at Sunny West from noon until 7:00 p.m., taking comments as people dropped by, reviewed the map, worked with our mappers to look at possible alternatives. And so I'll be presenting amendments tonight to Proposal B that is based on feedback on both A and B. In some cases, we got feedback on Proposal A that we weren't able to do, but we found a way to do it with these amendments. I'm going to walk through each map, some of the input that we got, lingering issues, and then the proposed amendments. So for the 17 district map, the ideal district size is about 42,000 people. At a broad level, the kind of demographic summary of Proposal B, it has two majority African-American districts. It has two plurality African-American districts. And by that, I mean they are districts in which there is no majority race or ethnicity, but the largest group is African-American. Similarly, there is one plurality Hispanic district, one plurality white district, and 11 majority white districts. We received approximately 200 comments on Proposal A for the 17 district map. That's both online and in person. And then on Proposal B, we received 39 online comments. This is a map of people's ratings of the comments that they made for Proposal A. You'll see a mix of green dots indicating people who are relatively satisfied with their district, and red dots, people who are relatively unsatisfied. Throughout the county, sometimes very close to one another. So there are people who view the same districts in very different ways. This is a similar map, but for the 17 district Proposal B. Some of the outstanding issues that we continue to hear with Proposal B are boundaries between and within urban, suburban, and rural communities, especially Bell's Bend and White's Creek. And then continued interest in seeing if there's a way to separate Madison and Inglewood, where they are combined into a district. So this is the Proposal A for District 17. I'm going to show in just a moment with the same colors what Proposal B looks like, as well as dashed lines showing the original Proposal A. And so to the extent that we could, we tried to make some major structural adjustments, and by that I mean not just moving a road or two over, but substantially rethinking some of the districts, particularly somewhat in Caneridge, but particularly in the northwest part of the county. And so these are the proposed draft amendments to Proposal B. And I'm going to walk through this one in a little bit of detail to help you see how some of the criteria work together or tug against one another, as well as how to read these maps as I go forward. So this is the boundary line between District 2 and District 3 along Dickerson Pike and in Madison. For a portion of the boundary here, north of Riley Parkway, we use Saunders Lane as the boundary. We heard concern that using Saunders Lane as a boundary divides two neighborhoods, each of which are, that are bounded by I-65 to the west and the railroad to the east, which are themselves divided by two west. And so what we proposed, the hatched areas are what would change with the amendment. What we've proposed is to jog the line around these two neighborhoods so that the boundary is less clean, but we keep the two neighborhoods coherent. And so this is what that looks like in the final recommendation. These two districts continue to comply with the equal population standard. The second amendment that we have is a proposal for a similar situation in the Haywood neighborhood between Haywood Lane and Wallace Road. A portion of the Haywood neighborhood is in District 11. The majority of it is in District 12. We looked to see if we could get all of it together in one district, and in the time that we had, we weren't able to accomplish that. However, we do have a proposal that would more evenly split it between the two districts so that each council member representing these two districts would have, you know, they would have an equal stake in going to either council member. And again, as before, both districts remain in compliance with the population standard. The final proposal relates to Millridge Park. As we kind of went through the community engagement process last week with the Caneridge community, we heard requests to adjust the boundary to keep Caneridge coherent or complete within the district. At that point, we were hearing district boundaries of I-24 or the railroad. We explored both of those. Ultimately, in Proposal B, we landed on the rail line. However, as the council member mentioned, it does now divide Millridge Park between two council districts. It's approximately the area labeled 19 on this slide, and then a portion of it goes across the rail line into the portion labeled 2003. We looked to see if we could combine it by bringing the 2003 portion in. That's the population number, so that put them substantially out of compliance. However, going the other way, as shown here, shifting the boundary from the railroad I-24 was feasible, and so we have recommended that here. And that is the presentation for the 17 district map. And I'll walk through the 15 district map. Here, the ideal district size is about 47,700. The demographic summary is that there are two majority African-American districts, two plurality African-American districts, one plurality Hispanic district, two plurality white districts, and eight majority white districts. Similar to the 17 district map, we got about 200 comments to Proposal A, about 41 comments for Proposal B. Again, here are the mix of comments on Proposal A, and then Proposal B. Outstanding issues here, again, District 15-2, which stretches from north Nashville into Bordeaux and the rural communities beyond Riley to the county line. We were not able to find a way to adjust sort of the structural balance here to better reflect either the rural communities or kind of the Bordeaux and north Nashville neighborhoods. We also got a cluster of comments on a very specific property, set of properties along Brick Church Lane. We have an amendment for that. And then finally, we have a set of comments related to the Maplewood neighbors along Gallatin Pike, between Gallatin Pike and Ellington Parkway, who feel they would be best served by being included in District 15-4, which is predominantly east Nashville. We weren't able to find a way to do that without being more disruptive to a set of other neighborhoods elsewhere in the district. And so we have not prepared an amendment for that. This is the original 15 district Proposal A, and then in a moment, I'll change to Proposal And then these are our draft amendments to Proposal B. The first is the Brick Church Lane property that I mentioned. This was, as we go through the process of redrawing these boundaries, you find something that works that just gets you into the population balance, and then you go and change something else, and without realizing it, you've opened up space to go back and correct something without necessarily realizing you have done that. So in response to the online comments, we found that we were able to shift this to cleaner boundaries of Riley Parkway and I-24, and so we've proposed that change here. And then we presented that as Amendment 15-1. The next set of districts are, the next set of changes are linked changes that all work together to solve multiple problems together. So I'm going to walk through these one by one. The first one is a set of neighborhoods along Lebanon Pike that are, associate more closely with Donaldson. Originally, we had included these in District 9, but we found that with this set of changes, we're able to kind of keep them with other Donaldson neighborhoods in District 15-14. As part of making that change, we have pulled 15-14 north to Murphysboro Pike. It includes a portion south of Murphysboro Pike right now. We've also been able to take some districts that were, or some neighborhoods that were included in District 5, Rosedale and neighborhoods along Berry Hill, and pull them back into District 9, which is more of a south Nashville district. We have a split neighborhood in Green Hills that with this change, we're able to keep it all together within one district in six. We've been able to return Wentworth Caldwell Park to the Creve Hall district, with which it's traditionally been associated. And then we have a mix of variety sort of neighborhood cleanups along the border of 10 and 11 that all together, in addition to keeping, I think, neighborhoods a little bit more together in this area, also helps to raise the overall proportion of the Hispanic population in District 10, which is the plurality Hispanic district. And then we have a couple of other changes shown in red that were not requests themselves, but make the other pieces work. And so one example is in District 5, extending that further down west end to include the Wentworth neighborhood, and then another neighborhood at the boundary of 11 and 12. There are a lot of pieces that went into this. You can see it's kind of a, making a little bit of changes to a whole bunch of districts that all work together. This is the Proposal B population deviations. These are all compliant. And then the proposal, the amendment deviations, again, these are all compliant. And with that, our recommendation is to recommend draft council district boundaries for 15, Proposal B as amended, and the 17 district Proposal B as amended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Claxton, and thank you for all the hard work. And I know that, the commissioners know that if you start messing with one part of the map, it shifts everything else, and so sometimes you've got to shift a few things. And I know that you all worked really hard on trying to keep neighborhoods together. All right. So commissioners, before we get started, it's a little bit different than a normal public hearing, and so I'll just kind of go through this, and we'll make sure that we're in legal compliance with how we're going to do it. So it seems to make sense to have the public hearing on both, just like we would on an A and B case. And then what we would do, I'd like to vote on them separately just to get clear, clean votes, and we can discuss amendments for each one separately. I think it'll be a little cleaner, Vice Chair, if we do that. And then, so we'll open the public hearing on both items, and then we will, anyone will open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak has two minutes under our normal presentation. And then we'll close the public hearing and have discussion. And I did see, but before we get started, I did see a couple other council members that came into the room, and so I think that it would be important for us to hear from them. Obviously, this affects the council districts. And Councilman Withers, thank you for all of your help on this process, and we appreciate you being part of the planning commission. This is where I think it really makes, it always makes sense to have a council member here, but this is a really important time for you to be part of this group, and so I appreciate that. So any questions on, yeah, Commissioner Tibbs on the process?
Just want to make sure I understood. So we are, the intent is we're going to recommend two for council?
Well, and I can, yeah, and I'll hand it over to the director. You know, there's, I think that in talking with a lot of the council members, and I think the director kind of has a reason for this, but it seems logical to provide them with some options, the options that meet the law and make sense. And I think both options took into account the Civil Rights Act more than anything, and I think that providing the council with a couple of options is a very logical thing, and I think the director has more information on that. Director, can I?
So this may feel a bit unusual to you, because when we do redistricting associated with the census in a routine way, the process is we have one map, we send it over to council, and they have an up or down vote, and if they disagree with us, it goes to referendum. So there's a very strict process. Legal can speak more to this, but under the state law that we're operating under here is different. So while our criteria are the same for redistricting at planning, council has a little more discretion in this, under this law, to make certain decisions. And one of them, for example, is a conversation about how many at-larges are appropriate. That's just one example of the kind of conversations that members are having. And so what we wanted to do is offer two alternatives that we think meet the redistricting criteria, but give an opportunity for them to have a debate if it should come to that, and we don't know how council may or may not view these. That's for them to work through. But then that, they're assured that we've given the criteria, the review under the criteria at planning, but then they have sort of wider things that they might be looking at, such as the at-large question, and they would have that option to do that. And so I know that's unusual, but that is our recommendation. Certainly, if this body wants to go in a different direction, that is also your prerogative, and we can send council comments as to your views on that, or if you have a preferred option. But we, our recommendation is that we think that both of these are different, but they both meet the standards.
And just one last thing. So we're going to look at each option separately, and based on, you know, our debate, we'll come up with any questions or comments or recommendations we have to it, and then that will be all put together as what we'll send to council. Okay. Sorry, just wanted to make sure.
No, it's a wonderful question. And so it's really up to this body. I'm only one vote. The two districts seem to make sense to me, but it's really for this commission to decide. And so Commissioner Johnson, another question?
Thank you, Chair. In that note, I think council body is deciding, and I have seen there are quite a few amendments, some council members are entertaining, eliminating all at-large and prefer 20 members district. And so, of course, we don't know which way council will decide, but it seems like in our body, what we are seeing is either 15-5 or 17-3. So then all of a sudden, we decide maybe we will entertain 20 districts. It will throw our staff, so staff won't be able to do it today.
So Commissioner, let me, I feel like I need to interject there, because if we, so if we start changing the map significantly here tonight, I talked to the director, and I think legal, we would have to come back tomorrow. I mean, or within the next day or two. And so just be prepared that if we start messing with the maps with other than a minor amendment, then for the public and for the council members, I just, you need to be prepared that we're going to come back if we do that. Right, Director?
Yes, and if I might offer a view on that, and I'd certainly welcome legals to weigh in here. While council may have wider discretion under this law, the planning commission really does not. And so what we attempted to do was hew as close to the charter as possible. So the charter envisions both at-large members and district members, and so that's where we stuck. Now, if after the commission votes, we had very firm kind of perhaps majority-type decision-making from council that they wanted to see a different condition, then I think we could respond to that. But as of today, I haven't received such direction from council, and that's okay. We have a separate mandate, and so that's our approach there, if that makes sense at all. Okay.
And I think Councilman Withers wanted, Councilman Withers, question?
I just wanted to, I guess, reiterate what was just stated, is that when the initial legislation was, from council, was proposed, it was based on sort of informal polling. As I think a lot of people know, council has limited access to each other outside of publicly noticed meetings, but I think the version that was initially- But I, I think the version that was initially circulated that enjoyed the most agreement was the Seventeen and Three. And the reason for that, there were a number of reasons, but one is that that sort of cut everything equally in half. So you cut the districts in half, you cut the number of large in half. And so that was thought to be, I think, by most members, the most equal distribution of that. We did have a council meeting where we took this up. We had several council members who supplied one or more amendments. The will of the body was actually not even to entertain any of those proposals. And so as frustrating as that was, I know Director Kemp and staff proposed that if they received no guidance from council, that they would produce a map that was Fifteen and Five, based on their analysis of the Voting Rights Act compliance. And so no, none of those amendments were recommended or even taken up by council. The council defer, decided to defer all of that. And so as a consequence, council took up Fifteen and Five. I, I did work with council member, or with Director Kemp the following morning to say, you know, the legislation that was before the body, actually with no substitutes, was Seventeen and Three, and could we also look at that? And Director Kemp and staff agreed to work on that, to at least look at that when we had our public hearing last Tuesday. Following the public hearing last Tuesday, the decision was to withdraw all of it since we'd at least had those two options to look at. So I, I completely concur with Director Kemp that if the council were to give us to have a meeting where the council finally decided to make a decision on anything, which could be Sixteen and Four, super districts, Twenty and Zero, that that'd be one thing, but we would need twenty-one council members to vote for that. And so far, we haven't had a council vote on any configuration at all. And so this is, this is what we have before us, again, following today's action. If, let's say, at the April eighteenth council meeting, the council were to finally come together and have twenty-one votes on any configuration, then that could potentially put the planning staff in a position of having some direction of which option to pick, but we just haven't reached that today. So what we have before us today is Fifteen and Five, which was initially recommended by the planning staff. Seventeen and Three, I specifically requested as the Planning and Zoning Committee Chair, and that was primarily in recognition of the fact that the legislation that was, you have a public hearing last Tuesday, was for Seventeen and Three.
Thank you, Councilman. And I think that's really good, just contextual information and background. And I do want to remind the commissioners, you know, when we, in my mind, when we, the reason why we, we chose those is because the professional staff said, you know, this is what meets the law, this is what we feel comfortable with. And that was the conversation that I had with the director. And then it's also from input from fifty-one council members and candidates, including public comment, and that's where the amendments came from. So the amendments came from the public comment from last week. And so here we are with these particular maps. And so when you start talking about, and I'm not saying maybe the commissioner, a particular commissioner has an idea for another amendment, you know, which is fine, but just note that if it's major change, we're gonna have to come back, and probably tomorrow. And so just, just know that. All right. So any other questions? I want to make sure, because this is a little different. We, this is a very different process than we're used to. So I want to make sure we get everybody's questions answered. All right. No other questions from the commissioners? All right. So we'll open this item for public hearing, and that's the twenty-twenty-three redistricting. And any, so we usually do anyone wishing to speak in support or opposition, but we're just gonna open it up. Everybody gets two minutes and per our rules. And so anyone wishing to speak, public comment, come on up. Welcome. And then for the record, like normal, state your name and address.
Hey, how y'all doing? My name is Ruby Baker, and I live at thirty-two, twenty-two Leewood Drive in District One. I am currently a candidate for Council District One, if that's what that's going to be. I've served in the district for, as president of our neighborhood association for more than fourteen years. Back in two thousand and one, when the redistricting took place, my Bordeaux Hills neighborhood was split. They used County Hospital Road as a dividing line, and it took years. Once it went back together, it took years for us to get the other side of the neighborhood to know that we are one and the same. So when I look at the district maps, I take off my candidate hat and I look at my neighborhood. I look at how we came together during the May twenty-ten flood, when little to no help was there. I look at how we came through a little tornado and little to no help was there. And I look at how we obtained a three million dollar stormwater drainage project together. And I look at how we reduced our crime drastically together. So the split was a concern to me. Even though it's gonna add more people to the council person, I was more concerned about my neighborhood being divided as well. So with that being said, that was my comment. And I got with the planning department during the open comment season period, and they put my neighborhood back together. And you have just satisfied and made happy almost two to three hundred people. So with that being said, I'm just saying, I support, if we have to divide, I support the maps, either one, because my neighborhood is whole. But I disagree with us thrust into this cycle. But as far as the neighborhood and connectivity, you did it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Welcome.
Good evening, neighbors. I'm Twana Chek from Canridge Community. I'm sorry y'all have to be there this evening. I would come back tomorrow. I wish we could postpone this until legally required. Maybe we would get an injunction tomorrow. But primarily, I want to speak to having Canridge kept together and keep our diversity. I'm against any amendments that would split Canridge apart. Before Metro became Metro, Canridge was whole. Millridge Park belonged to the Mary and Eileen Moore sisters, who were, they were teachers at the Canridge School. I twenty-four came in and split it. Canridge went to the railroad tracks, which is why we asked for that. The other piece of property that became part of the park was the Sue Burkett Clark home. She also was a teacher at Canridge and a student at Canridge. So it is one community. There was no public voice on this amendment. That opportunity hasn't been afforded us by the state, but it did stretch across Canridge Road. Just this morning, I was with a developer from Century South, looking at some of the graves that were attached to Mary and Eileen Moore's parents' house, which is on the other side. It is all one community. Both Canridge Community Trust and Canridge Community Club separately, we're able to sit down with staff and come up with maps that keep Canridge together. We appreciate that. If it is required to make a choice, Seventeen B is the one that seems to work the best. Respectfully to Canridge, to Councilmember Stiles, a desire to be involved in a particular project shouldn't usurp the desire of the community to be whole again. The Friends of Millridge Park will continue funding the park regardless of what district it's in. Historic Canridge and its families from the eighteen hundreds defines all of this area that we specifically asked for. It used to go benzine to Tusculum, and at one point, Metro took part of the property from the Maxwell Farm to make Bell Road, but it used to go up that far. If the logic is that parks must exist in one district, then we would not have been able to add to the park. And today, it is actually in two districts, Thirty-two and Thirty-three. So we'd like to put it back together. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Real quick, I'd like to thank staff first of all. This is kind of like squeezing a balloon, you know, everything moves when you move one thing. But I want to say personally, thank you for trying to put the communities together, although as I look at them out, both of them, White's Creek is a community, and they get split on both of them. And I'm sure you looked at that and tried to work that out. Thank you for that. But as far as, I'm gonna sound like bingo here, but I like Seventeen, B, Three, One. So I like the, the B version of Seventeen and Three, and I'm in District One. Just for the record, I live in District Ten now. I've lived in District One just about my whole time. I've lived in Jolton. But Jolton, over the past thirty years, has been sliced and diced, and we've become four corners. We've, this, and this puts us back whole, and I really appreciate this. The first time, like I said, in thirty years, that Jolton is back together as a whole community. We've taken on a lot of neighbors, but at least we are back together as a community in, in one district. And I thank the staff for that. But again, I wish they, had it been somewhere, you could have worked out something with the White's Creek community, and I'm sure you looked at that. But I do want to express concerns that the White's Creek is gonna be split. They're kind of like Canridge. They're an old, very old community with a lot of history there. For those who have never been down through there, the Trail of Tears went through there. The Jesse James gang lived there. Matter of fact, I heard rumor, may not be true, that they robbed the bank across the street from where they were staying. But anyway, I hate to see that they're getting, getting divided, but I'm sure you did all you could. Thank you again, once again, for the record, Seventeen Three is the one we, B, B, make sure we go B and One. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Good to see you. Welcome. Mr. Stern?
Good afternoon. I too would like to provide my appreciation for Greg Claxton and his team. I don't see how they pulled this off. I, I spent three hours with them in this room yesterday trying to work on Fifteen, on the fifteen-member version. And my eyes glazed over by the time I left the room. I did, I did hope that the plans that we had created here would be transferred into a amendment proposal of some sort, but seeing that they aren't, I'd like to ask Mr. Claxton for kind of an explanation for the design of the breakup of Canridge in the fifteen-member layout proposal, because it's, looks very gerrymandered, which we know is a bad thing, and challenging.
Well, we'll, we'll answer the question.
Okay, that'd be great. We opposed the Fifteen, we, we then opposed the Fifteen Five plan for two reasons, that gerrymanders Canridge to meet the needs of elected officials, current elected officials. And that is not a factor that you should be considering today. We created a historical geographic area that dates back over a hundred years and have asked that you incorporate the Canridge community as a component of both of these plans. It's needed. We have absorbed probably, I think District Thirty-two, no, Thirty-One, John Rother's district, had either the highest level of growth in the last ten years or the next to highest level. So the population numbers we already have in Canridge are low from the census than what we have today. If you do defer the decision on this until Friday, we would like the opportunity to talk about amendments to both the Fifteen and Two and the Seventeen and Three, because oddly enough, when we mapped Canridge, it was interestingly diverse. There was forty-five percent white and forty-five percent minority. Now, we don't know what happened to the other ten percent of folks, but it was, I was kind of shocked. I thought it was gonna be much higher in the white population, but it was not. So we'd like to embrace that diversity and use it to our advantage moving forward, bringing people together to talk about community solutions. We've got a community plan amendment that we've applied for through metro planning staff. We're still kind of waiting on that. And then we have some small area plans that we are doing as Canridge. And I think by bringing people together on common purpose, on common geography, we're able to better solve the problems that we face. I was here for the nineteen ninety-one redistricting, as a few of you were. It was dominated by the metro council members. It was their show mostly. I, you know, you were young back then, Stuart. The two thousand and one, two thousand and one redistricting came after Mayor Purcell was elected on a neighborhood platform. And so that process was amazingly engaging with the neighborhood alliance, the Resource Center, legal women voters, and everybody coming together around a common purpose. And that was a beautiful thing. I wasn't around in twenty-eleven, and I was scared to come out in twenty-twenty-one, so I had to watch that by video. We think that our proposals make sense, population size, geographically, racial, racial representation. And we think that it creates a community that can move forward together. And I do thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we'll get, and we'll get to the council members that came in. I'll recognize you all once we get through all the public. Any, anybody else wishing to speak? Come on up.
I'd just say thanks for all your hard work. What a job. But I'm John Taylor, I live in Canridge. I'm for keeping Canridge together, so it's Seventeen B is what I would suggest.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. So I saw Council Lady Hauser. Do you want to go, or you, you good? Your Council Lady Hauser is observing. I love when the council members observe. And talk, of course. That's a long pause. Council Lady Lee, do you want to come on up? Welcome. You're observing and speaking, which is good. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Hello to all of you. Thank you for your work and staying up with this. This is, I want to say very interesting, but that's not really the word that I want to use. I, I am kind of dismayed at how bullies act sometime, but a part of that is what I do in my regular job, and I've been up there on the hill looking at stuff all day. So that's part of this coming in. But at what you're looking at, I, and I think it's B, but Seventeen is, is what I'm looking at. I hate to see incumbents put against each other. I hate to see things differently from what the constituents wanted and what they voted for. Just given the two that we have, I think Seventeen keeps it more in line with what my community voted. So that's what I would like. If I could draw it, which I can't, because that's too much work, but it, it would be totally different, because we have each one representing where our folks voted for us. But I do understand who we are. So given that amount, thank you for allowing me to talk, and Seventeen is, Seventeen and Three is what I would prefer. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady. Council Lady Hauser, you, you want to speak? You change your mind, which is, which is, which is okay. You come on up, come on up. We want to make sure we get everybody, for sure. We, we.
The, the thing I want to put forth, and some of you that are sitting on this board have been on the council, so you understand the magnitude of work when we have forty, and the magnitude when we have double the amount of work. In fact, I think I did the, looking up the population of all the counties in Tennessee and all the cities in Tennessee. If we were to say every mayor was to take care of at least the forty-five thousand constituents, that would mean that we'd only have, I think it's ninety, no, it's over two hundred and fifteen cities have less population than what one council person will be serving. And so my concern is with the number of at-large versus the districts. And the reason I bring this up is it's lovely to be an at-large person and look at the whole county and have that option to look at whatever legislation you wish to look at and not have to be dealing with. at and not have to be dealing with constituent issues. But I don't feel that with the number of people, that our council people are going to be serving, that we can afford the luxury of five at-large. And I know that's a harsh word to say, the luxury of. But the reason I say that is, I can't imagine that we're going to suddenly be serving forty-eight thousand people per council person. We will not have the representation. So I am much encouraged to try to go with the seventeen and three B version. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll make sure we get everybody. All right. So seeing no one else. Oh, Councilman Hall, you just made the buzzer. You're okay. You don't need to speak. Okay, Council. Councilman Swob still has no comment. But thank you for coming. I appreciate all the councilmen. I really do. They work tirelessly for their constituents. And I appreciate you all very much. And, and I appreciate Councilman Withers for his extra duty. I don't think he gets hazard pay for being on the commission or extra pay. So I just want to say thank you for all of the hours that you put in. And, and Councilman Withers goes to many, many of our public meetings. And so we appreciate him very much. All right. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. We're on discussion now. And Vice Chair, as traditionally, we always start with, with you in the discussion.
So happy.
I know.
Um, you know, I, I feel like I have more questions or more questions, issues with trying to, to decide which way to go. I mean, I think, as everyone has said, but want to acknowledge how much work Greg and all of your staff has done. You know, this was not something, I laughed the other day when Greg said, you know, in a normal month, I'd be doing the capital improvements budget or plan right now. And I'm like, that's no small undertaking. To replace redistricting with that is, is just kind of crazy. But I appreciate that so much thought has gone into this. And I really appreciate the hours that were given this week to public input. And I appreciate the, the people that came out and, and took the time to provide that input. I think that's, that's great. You know, it's hard to, to react when it seems so sort of improbable that we should be dealing with this. One, one process question. So I think you kind of addressed this. But if we adopt this, council could have another meeting and, and adopt one of these two options? Or would it then come, does it then come back to us to have to go through another? Meeting?
Our law director, Mr. Dietz, you want to answer that? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, for the question. Yeah, the short answer is yes. The council can meet and adopt one of the maps that you recommend. If you recommend two, they can choose one and adopt it. And under the statute, the statute calls for them to do that honorable for May first. But there's no consequence to the council if they don't act by May first. If the council does nothing by May eighteenth, which is the qualifying deadline for the election, then this election is canceled and council members' terms are extended for one year. And there would be an election in August of twenty twenty-four for a new council with terms of three years. And then it would get back on a four-year cycle. So if the court does not enjoin this law, the council can decide to adopt the map or not. It's also possible, and I'm sorry this is so convoluted, but that's just where we are. It's also possible that the council will receive your two maps and then ask you to do a tweak here or a tweak there or something different. And just because this body, this commission must approve a map or more by Monday. So that is a hard and fast deadline. But it doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean that the council can't come back to this body and say, we'd like you to do, let's see door number three. That's a possibility. I don't know if that will happen. But it's a little bit confusing the lay of the land here. Did that answer your question?
It does. But so to your point, they could come back anytime between now and May first and ask for the new maps. Or is it between now and Monday? May and first? Okay.
We have a hard deadline in the, in the state law to pass a map or maps by?
Monday.
Monday.
Okay.
But then there's a whole month of, of the rest of April where council then has to work. And they're given its own, their own deadline. But as the law director laid out, there aren't clear consequences there. There's a process that would happen. If in the event, we got more specific guidance from council that they wanted a different version, as I mentioned earlier, we would expect a vote, a majority vote on that directing us. We proposed these two because they're as close to the form of government that we have in the charter. And so that's how we acted because we have an independent deadline.
Right.
Again, this is different than the process we follow when we have the regular census, when planning proposes a map, and that's it, unless council wants to go to a referendum. So it's a, it's a different process that we're working under here.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I, I was a little bit confused, Greg, on whether we were able with the seventeen and three amendments, were we able to address, it sounds like you were able to address some of the concerns about Kane Ridge. I'm trying, I was trying to follow both the maps.
Sure. So I think what we've done in the seventeen map is address the concerns around keeping Mill Ridge in a single district. But I think you heard from, from members of the public, a preference for the rail line to remain as, as the, the boundary.
And the rail line?
That would be the, so on this map, the rail line is the eastern boundary of district thirteen.
Okay. And then so the next one, when you, I, okay.
So the council member requested keeping the park together. That's not unusual. We will have, and Councilman Withers can speak to this, we will have requests to keep large capital projects together. We do have scenarios where capital projects are split among two different, two districts. It has to do with how well a member or a community are able to effectively advocate for getting funding and to sort of work with residents on the specific development projects.
Okay. But the, so the community request was to, to split?
In essence, Greg clarified, is the, the council person was recommending keeping them to the park together.
That's right.
What the testimony that we heard today would essentially split the park.
Right.
You heard further testimony with a different?
With a different configuration.
A different configuration altogether.
Okay.
And I think if you could address, did you evaluate this configuration? And can you address a bit of what?
Yes, for the, for the handout?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
So for the fifteen configuration, we did take a look at what Mr. Stern prepared yesterday. And I would, I would kind of put this in the category of, of a couple of things. One, something we see when we work with the public is that people come in and they have a very specific thing that they want to achieve. And oftentimes, you can do that very specific thing. It has knock-on effects to other districts that are often, you know, people will commonly say, look, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about my, my neighborhood, my community. And, and that's fair. That's what we're asking of them. But when we look, step back and look at how the other districts work, it's often not viable. Like their district works, it makes a ton of sense. But kind of what it does with other areas. And so in this case, if you look at the district labeled ten in green, this kind of goes back to an older pattern that we had heard concerns about from the community in the twenty twenty-one cycle of stretching from Creve Hall and Caldwell Abbey Hall over to Paragon Mills. And it kind of brought neighborhoods into the same district that we had heard a lot of concern about in the last cycle. And so that's why we didn't sort of put this forward as an amendment. It also kind of reconfigures other districts in a way that seem equally awkwardly laid out. So the district in orange eight, which runs from Nolan Hill Pike, it goes off the map, but it stretches over to Forest Hills, I believe. And then similarly, district twelve seems somewhat awkward. Again, with more time, this may be something that we could work out. But given the compressed schedule of review from yesterday, it wasn't something we, we felt comfortable bringing forward.
Thank you. I, I really don't have further comment. I mean, I think there's a lot of questions. I don't, you know, I think both these maps seem like they're a way to, to go about doing this. I don't know if they're the best way to go about doing this. I think I would much rather have a discussion about what the future of our city government looks like, whether we think we still need at-large council members and district council members, or whether it's Council Lady Hauser recommended that maybe we should just have district. I don't know. Those are all things that we should be discussing if we're going to do something like this. But from purely, you know, with, with what you're faced with, I think, you know, I'm, it's, it's the best we can do. It does seem like the seventeen maybe is the better direction to go. But, you know, I'm happy to support both maps. I'm sorry to see that, you know, we lose some of our majority-minority council districts. I think that's really important to, to maintain that voice. But, you know, in terms of keeping what we have to have done on, on Monday, I am happy to vote to approve the two maps that this department has put forth.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Tibbs?
Yeah, you'll, you'll hear this all night, but you guys did incredible job. And especially to hear you'd rather be doing the CIV as much. That's this big. So, 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 you know, and to jump to the end, I too will be comfortable recommending or supporting both of these. But just for my, make sure I understand all my questions. Could you go to that map that has the dissatisfied part on there, the little bubbles for that?
Do you, do you want the, the fifteen or the seventeen?
We'll start with the seventeen, I guess. And only thing I wonder, if you could just kind of describe, because this, could you just describe this a little bit more to me?
Sure.
And you can, maybe you can summarize both of them. But that was the question about that.
Yeah. I mean, it's, so these are the, the comments that people submitted online where we provided a survey. And as part of that, they ranked their satisfaction from satisfied to not satisfied. And then we're able to put a point on a map. And so in addition, we also had at our public meetings, the posters that you see in the back where people were able to put a green dot if they wanted us to try to keep something the same in the next draft, a red dot if they wanted to change. And so, you know, you see a lot of reactions on here. I mean, by and large, a lot of positive, a lot of negative in both configurations, seventeen and fifteen. I think the things that stand out is, you know, people, I mean, traditionally, we had in district one, from Bordeaux, White's Creek, parts of Jolton, you know, this kind of suburban to rural transition, which also kind of more or less followed a, a transition from predominantly black neighborhoods to predominantly white neighborhoods. That's been, I mean, just the, the urban suburban difference and sort of the attitudes towards growth, you know, with people looking for services, preservation, and people looking to avoid services, you know, has been a source of frustration that I think you, you all have seen in cases, we also heard through the, the redistricting process. And so that, you know, kind of discussion around that, the nature of that district of expanding that from not just Bordeaux into White's Creek, but also North Nashville, Bordeaux, White's Creek, Jolton. I think you see a lot of that in the comments. We saw a lot of comments in Madison on both maps. Madison has been seeking for a while to have a single Madison district. We got a lot closer, I think, in, in, in both proposal Bs, but we're not quite there. So you see some comments in, on the A district and, and the B district. A lot of comments around kind of downtown, what is located with downtown. So those are the, the kinds of things that we heard, I think, in, in both maps, really.
Okay, that's, I appreciate that. Also, the, so what I do remember, and I agree with Vice Chair, I, I think Councilman Withers also brought it up about, you know, if it was just a real direction on how we wanted to do as far as at-large. But based on the criteria, I think we have to go forward where we are for at this point. But the map, you had two that talked about the, had like the plurality name on it. Could you, because I do think I remember initially, we said fifteen and five was probably the more diverse option. Is that still the diverse representation?
Yes. So, so we had done an analysis that we presented a couple of weeks ago, in which without drawing district boundaries, we laid out what, how we expected the different configurations to perform in terms of particularly for the African-American community, being able to maintain its representation, twenty-five percent of the county and twenty-five percent of the council. What we found in that analysis carried forward into these maps. So it's not, so these maps are in line with that analysis. And what, what, what we presented at that time was that fifteen and five gave what we called the broadest pathway to maintaining representation. So if all of the majority African-American districts and the plurality African-American districts voted as they have in the past, and the at-large voting continued as it had been in the past, that would achieve thirty percent representation for the African-American community. If one of those dropped, one district went another direction to a white representative or of, of another race, or one of the at-large kind of reverted to the, the prior pattern of, of, of one at-large being African-American out of the five, it would still achieve twenty-five percent representation. And so it seemed like the, the safest approach. That said, if you take the same logic and apply it to the seventeen district map, there is still a pathway to getting to that twenty-five percent. So it, it feels narrower and a lot more uncertain over the, how, how the electoral performance of African-American candidates would go with three at-large. But that path is still there.
Well, that's, that part is still good. I, I was encouraged after the last time I was presented that there, this was a, a, a way to try to get as much of an African-American vote and diversity still. So that, you know, as far as just the ready legislation as it comes up. But, you know, that's still promising here. Because the seventeen and three, you know, especially after some of the way you described today, because I do feel like communities are still really important and not, you know, kind of the, as the residents from Kane Ridge brought up, as much of keeping that together and as you brought up about Madison. It seems like it's as much time and effort you could put into it to get that, I think is important. And so I, I do appreciate that. And both of these, I think, represent closer to the things that I would be concerned about. And, and you just kind of hit both of them, communities. Well, I brought that up, but communities as well as diversity. And because we don't want to, it's much having to work with this. So we, we don't want to lose the voices that have helped us get where we are. And so I appreciate that. And like I said in the beginning, I, I definitely support both of these. And as far as the effort, you know, of course, we can tweak them for another year. But I think based on where we are, these are good and I'll support going for it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Black's here.
Well, I'd like to thank you again. I know you probably get tired of hearing it, but we won't get tired of saying it. Because I know this was an incredible burden, really, that was been put on you, I mean, the county, but also you and your, your great expertise to help us along the way in this redistricting that has been thrust upon us. A lot of my questions have been answered, had questions about the Kane Ridge configuration, questions about how the seventeen and three and the fifteen and five configurations impacted diverse and really representative representation in the county. Can you, we talked about the African-American vote a little bit. Can you talk about how this impacts Hispanic vote? Is there a plurality Hispanic district right now?
So in, you mean in the thirty-five districts?
Right.
Yeah. In the, the twenty twenty-one map that was adopted, there are two plurality Hispanic districts. They are next to each other. That reflects a lot of the underlying nature of the Hispanic community and southeast in general, where it is, it is just a very, very diverse community. And so we looked in twenty twenty-one to see if we could create a, a majority Hispanic district. Like even putting aside all of the other criteria, can you just sort of stitch things together? And we weren't able to do it. The flip side of that is when we make this shift, we were able to maintain a plurality Hispanic district in both maps. Again, because it is so kind of enlarged and diverse and widespread, that, that, that was a reasonable thing for us to maintain.
Gotcha. I thought that's what you had mentioned prior, but wanted to confirm that. So you talked So, you talked a little bit about this. If you could speak to this just a little bit more and make sure that I'm following along. So you talked a bit about the suburban versus rural tension, and particularly how that plays out with this, I guess, currently District 1. And can you speak to how that changes between the 15 and 5 and the 17 and 3 maps?
Sure. So I think in both, you know, one of the things we heard very clearly was a desire to have, like, kind of keep the rural communities together. There were concerns about, I think, in predominantly the 15 district map, where we had North Nashville, Bordeaux, and then Whites Creek, and then the county line, that you've got such a widespread from very, very urban, next to downtown, to the county line, to very, very rural. We looked for ways to try to shift out of that, and we couldn't find any way that didn't sort of radically reshape the map. And maybe with more time, we're able to find something that's a better balance. As folks came out to the community meetings, like, one of the points that we made is, is we looked at, you know, is it possible to create just a single rural district? And we went from Goodlettsville, through Jolton, through Whites Creek, to Bell's Bend, and that wasn't enough population. Again, kind of pushing aside every other criteria, we also went all the way to Bellevue and the opposite corner of the county, picking up the rural populations there, and that wasn't enough population. So it's just, it's kind of, it's a, it's a community that is very, very dispersed. It's very tough to keep together in one district. And so we've been looking for ways to try to reflect some of the underlying communities. And so to Mr. Moore's point earlier, in the 15 map, we got all of Jolton more cohesive. Previously, it had been split a little bit more. The flip side is on the 17 map, we've got kind of one predominantly rural district in with Goodlettsville. We've got what's labeled as 17-2, which is part of that suburban to rural transition. And then 17 and 5, again, a little bit of that transition from Bordeaux over to Bell's Bend. That was kind of what we were able to make work with kind of piecing the other districts together, but it's, you know, it's something that, you know, I think the community would like to further investigate if we had time. It's something that I think would be worth further investigation.
I appreciate your work on this. I mean, I know, I mean, just by virtue of it being rural, obviously, the residents were going to be a little bit more spread out, so it's going to be hard to grab the population necessary to make the districts the appropriate size, but I've obviously been very thoughtful about how to do that. And it's, I mean, to try to go all the way out to Bellevue to pick up people, I mean, that's quite an effort, so.
It was just to see if it would work.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Like, it was just to get a sense of scale.
Yeah, no, but I appreciate your thoughtfulness on this, on that piece, but obviously the maps in general. So, I mean, I, like the other commissioners, would be in favor of approving the maps as they stand. We all lament the amount of time that we were given to kind of go through this, but here we are, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I have to echo, thank you so much for your, Mr. Claxton, and your team. It is enormous work, and, you know, capital improvement budget is coming right after, so really, thank you for the hard work of the staff. So, you know, by listening to voice, to the council, to the community, and what community wanting is, adopted 21, 22 map, that's crystal clear. However, it's not an option. To meet the act and to meet our obligation, we have to recommend one of the map. So understanding, you know, under the normal circumstances, if we were to approve one map, and then council has choice, either approve it as a whole or reject it and go to referendum. But since it's not under regular circumstances, so council has choice to come back to us to further direct us to shift the line, the boundary, whatever. So, knowing that, I think with the public input, it seems majority of the public in here prefer 17.3B version. So to meet the deadline, to do our job to, under the act, I think it's prudent for us to just recommend 17.3. So if council has rejected that, they will direct us to whatever the district or number or proportion, however you see, they see fit. So for that, I'm in favor of just approving 17.3B version. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Chair. I just apologize to everyone. You know, I worked so hard with our staff and with the community, and attended so many of the community meetings in the fall of '21 on the regular redistricting for 35 districts and five at-large. And we didn't please everybody, but we got to a place that at least everyone accepted that process. And I apologize to everyone that I'm so emotional today, but, you know, our state has forced this upon the planning commission staff and upon our citizens. And just moments ago, our state disenfranchised, I think District 6 and lots of other council districts. And that's just, that's just weighing on me so hard. And I just, I apologize, I don't want to weigh state politics into this, but this whole discussion about voter representation, even with gerrymandered state senate and state house districts, even with all of that, whether or not you voted for the District 52 state representative, a lot of our citizens have just been disenfranchised. We have key votes going on in the state on legislation that affects Davidson County, and even from the standpoint of just having even a protest vote, even if we know that our Davidson County delegation can't get something onto the floor, maybe can't even get an amendment onto the floor, at least did they have the opportunity to have a representative to stand on the state floor and vote no for something that harms Davidson County that has been removed in the last hour? And I'm just, I'm just stunned that this would happen. And I'm a little bit of lost for words, and I apologize to everyone, but like I said, this happened around 3:30 today, and so I apologize for being late, but I've got constituents who are calling, texting, like, what can we do, what can we do, what can we do? I'm just stunned that we're at this level in our state with the number of things that have gone on that do live, like a representative of district, I was District 52, has been expelled, and there's literally no vote that can be cast for half of my districts, council districts, constituents, and a lot of those in the county. And I apologize, I know this is not relevant to this, in the department, it's not relevant to any of this, but.
Yeah, Councilman, let's try.
We've got to talk about it.
Let's reel it back in.
All right. So having said that, I will try to reel it back in. So, what was so persuasive to me about Greg Claxton's presentation to council earlier was the importance of at-large council members for diverse representation. And I know a lot of district council members have little tussles sometimes between district and at-large, like, what are you doing, and what are you doing? But Greg's presentation about the importance of five at-large was so important, was so persuasive to me. When I look at the five at-larges that we've had during my term, two terms on the council, that's included not just, you know, you're going to have one African-American, you may have one conservative, like, I think the political perspective is important. You know, one of my five at-larges colleagues, African immigrant Muslim, barely made it, but did, and I'm so glad that she did, into the top five. And I want to think about how important are these diverse viewpoints to our city? And what role does at-large play in ensuring that we have representation of some of these diverse viewpoints, whether it be immigrant and national, you know, you have to be US citizen, obviously, but immigrant status, first generation or not, race, ethnicity, religious minorities, sexual and gender minorities. And I think that when you tie all of that, as important as it is, I mean, I'm a neighborhood person, I believe that neighborhood groups should be together as much as they can be, but I also know the neighborhood groups can work across a district line and still get things done. But racial, ethnic, sexual minorities, other kinds of minorities, don't have that luxury. And that's why I believe that the five at-large is so important to ensuring that this is a diverse county, and that populations in this county that may not be able to gel enough to elect a district council member, even in 35 districts, much less 15. I believe that 15 is so important, so that I was to have five at-larges, so that we can have diversity on the Metro Council. And I do, and I sympathize with all of these neighborhood groups, and I'm a neighborhood person myself, but I think that everything that we have just seen through our county elections, but also through the state, emphasizes to me why it is so important to have the broadest number of at-large council members who can represent racial, ethnic, sexual orientation, and other different kinds of, just to bring those perspectives. I even tell people, you know, even with the five at-larges, that usually is how you get, you usually have one conservative. I think even being fair to the conservative perspective, to saying, like, it can be hard to run in Nashville as a conservative, I think that's true, right? But even to have that kind of political diversity perspective, that having five at-larges is so important to the balance in our county. When you have gentrification that's going on that we all talk about all the time, it's going to get harder and harder and harder and harder to have any council districts of any size that are majority or minority, that's just the way it is. And so I believe that preserving five at-larges is critical to the future of diverse representation in this county. And I just offer that, and thank you, and appreciate everyone for your patience.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. All right. Commissioner Hanley.
Thank you, Chair. And again, as everyone else has done, acknowledging the work that our planning staff has had to go through, and some of the challenges they've had to endure, just being placed upon them, it's not lost on me. You know, I actually am glad to see two options, mostly because, you know, I've been somebody who's personally been critical of our council and some of our council members. But I definitely recognize that our city's been in a very fortunate situation to have the level of representation per capita that we have, and the ability for our council members to interact with their communities in a way that's probably unparalleled for, you know, a top 20 city. And so with that being said, you know, my knee-jerk was, we need to have as many council members remaining as possible. But as Greg presented to us previously, and as the council member just highlighted, the importance of at-large members and working to maintain the opportunity to have more diverse representation on the council, I think is extremely important. And, you know, with the limited time that we have, I think it's important that we present our best options, but also encourage the council to continue the conversation. I think it just needs to keep happening. And with that being said, you know, I'm very comfortable with what's been presented here. I do like the fact that there's a lot of amendments that were made to try to preserve some neighborhood cohesion, and I think, you know, there's still some opportunities to make some of those changes, and I think the council members are probably best to be able to further influence that.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Clifton.
I'm simply not going to mention it, because everyone else has, but I'll write you later. And not just you, but everyone. It's hard to know exactly what to focus on with something like this. It seems to me that some of the arguments and suggestions from the public had merit. It's a little hard to pull that in at this point. I know they've been trying to pull it in before now, but it's very hard, I think, for us to go against, to just sort of create here what it should look like as another option. Just to clarify, though, the suggestions from Mr. Stern, that he was suggesting, you have looked at those, and they just can't be done within the framework? Is that what you're saying?
So, I would not say they can't be done. I would say that what we have put forward is more in compliance with the criteria that we're working with.
Good.
I mean, I think the, kind of, the ways that communities are grouped together outside of the Cambridge district, primarily in the District 15 map, I think works within our criteria and our framework better. I'll note that on the 17 map, you'll see that one of the districts is marked with a red box. That indicates that it's, the population is out of balance, and so, you know, that's common when the public comes in, they get as far as they can, you can't quite get it all the way. So we didn't spend quite as much time reviewing that one, in part because it was a little closer to the existing district.
Thank you. Well, I have a lot of thoughts about this, as someone who spends all of my days at the legislature from January through, through whenever they decide to adjourn, which with any luck, will be tomorrow. Did I say that? No. But I do know that, that we've gotten an amazing bit of work done here and by the staff, and that both of these proposals, from a planning perspective and from a general perspective of meeting constitutional criteria, are worthy of presenting to the policymaking body of the county, which is not us on all of these issues, but is the elected Metro Council. So I will be suggesting, I will be voting for both of those. I understand what Councilman Withers is suggesting about five. I would point out that it's a matter of some pride to me that we, for the last several years, have had 40% of our at-large members being African-American, being black council members. It's never happened before, though. It might not again. So I'm not entirely sure that going to five at-large is exactly what I would see as enhancing diversity on it. So I'm not just, I'm not, I'm not really for 15 and 5, but that's certainly within the purview of the council to adopt. It certainly doesn't violate a planning principle that I care that much about. I really don't like the idea of going away with the at-large at all. For one thing, the framers of our local government had a great plan that was somewhat forced upon them by public opinion, because it took two tries to get this through, and only passed the legislature when we had the large council and the vast majority being district and a few being at-large. So I'd like to keep within, that within the realm of something we, that the council would vote on, is being true to that heritage. So I'm not for five at-large being the only thing we suggest, and I'm certainly not for no at-large. So I'm for both. And I'm sorry we can't accommodate some of the things that have been brought forward today by constituents, by citizens. But I'll be voting for whatever motion somebody makes to include both of these, as the staff has suggested.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Haines.
Do I get the end? So I think to reflect on this, one of the things, Councilman Withers, that all the council members need to do when you vote on this, is to think about the spirit of this city, that it really started 60 years ago, when we consolidated city and county government. And it's a unique strength of our city government, and as you weigh 17.3, 15.5, or some other version, we need to maintain the fabric and strength of our city as a consolidated government. Having said that, Mr. Dietz, a couple procedural questions for you. If the council waits until April 30th and chooses one version, that version happens to be 17.3, what happens with the incumbents and those that have filed to run? Do they then have to refile? Do they then have to refile on May 1st for the new district?
Thank you, Commissioner. The short answer is yes. Their qualifying petitions with their signatures will be void. They will need to pick up new petitions and get the signatures and have the petitions filed by May 18th. So they essentially have to start over from scratch.
So, one of the questions I asked at our workshop was my concern about new districts that have no representation. So have we looked at the incumbents who are planning to run again? Have we looked at those that have filed for election? And Greg, do we know either in the 155 or 173 model, are we potentially going to create a district that has no one, has an incumbent, no one that's filed to run, and all of a sudden, in 17 days, we've got to find a candidate to go serve that district?
I don't believe there's any district without either an incumbent or someone who has filed to run.
In either 155 or 173. Okay.
I believe that's correct.
With, with that being answered, that gives me assurance that we're going to have representation, which is really, really important. So I will be supporting staff's recommendation of the two versions.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. And before we get to a motion, and I just have a couple of things I, I want to say, I'm extremely proud of, of the planning department under the circumstances, and I know that's been said by, by most of you, but to me, it's a reflection of the team that we have, and we've worked really hard, the director and I, so I'm very proud of the director for building a team and the culture in the department that can respond and get something like this done in a very short period of time. And so I just want to say thank you to the director and the team and to Mr. Claxton for all of that hard work. And I think it's a reflection of the culture in the department, and I'm really proud of that culture. We have probably one of the stronger, I don't want to, well, maybe I shouldn't go there, but one of the stronger departments in metro government, and I'm, we've worked really, really hard at that. The other thing that I want to say is that I, I'm usually hard on lawyers when they come in here, and I want to, I'm not hard on the director, I appreciate him and, and the attorneys that he provides for our guidance and, but one thing I am proud of the commission for is we really work hard to limit the amount of lawsuits that we're in, and I think that the team and the legal advice that we get does that. And so I think that this meets our obligation of the law and that it's something, if we do pass it, which we haven't passed it yet, and I'm proud, I'm proud of that. And commissioners, you should be proud of that, too. And I'm also proud of the commissioners, you guys have just, you love the city, you work tirelessly till midnight or almost midnight the other night, and I just appreciate all of your hard work and listening, and I feel like we really do listen and respond to the public. And I feel like we, this plan is based on public comment, it's based on meeting with every candidate, Commissioner Haynes, every candidate and every council member. And I think that that's a really hard thing to do in the amount of time that we did. So, we, Commissioner Clifton, do you have anything else before, any more discussion?
I had something before you asked someone to make a motion.
Oh, yeah.
To clarify, one is that lawyers are our friends, and I think somebody should say that.
Thank you.
Secondly, I just want to be clear in my own understanding before I vote on anything. We are acting under state law, and state law has given our Metro Council no obligation to act. And whatever we pass is not necessarily our endorsement that they're supposed to take in action. Is that correct? That would not be my endorsement.
Well, I, I think that's correct, but we'll get our legal director up here to answer your question, because I have a personal opinion about that, but I would.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, could you repeat the question, please?
I guess, I guess what I was trying to say was, the state law does not require the council to act, it requires us to act and present something to the council.
That, that is correct. The law requires the planning commission to approve a map by Monday. The deadline was Saturday, but under the state law, on counting days, you get to have until Monday. But this commission must approve a map, otherwise you have failed to comply with.
We have an obligation, they don't.
You have an obligation. The council does not.
I just wanted to make that clear because I, never mind.
To, to that point, Mr. Dietz, can you give all of us, before we vote, an update on the status of the lawsuit? I know y'all were in court earlier in the week.
You may notice I have been watching my phone. We are literally waiting for an opinion to come in any minute now. The argument was Tuesday morning. We know the judges have been working hard. They promised to get us an opinion as soon as they could. I'm hopeful that we have an opinion. I actually was hopeful we would have it before 4 o'clock. I told the director there was a chance that we might be able to just cancel this meeting if we had an injunction, but no such luck yet. So I really do expect an opinion before the weekend, up or down on the injunction. So at least from the trial court, I'm very hopeful we will know by the end of the day tomorrow.
One further question. I assume if we were to win the injunction, we should expect an appeal by the state legislature?
I, I think that's most likely. We have some arguments we think are pretty compelling as to why they should not, the, just the chaos that we're all dealing with, and the fact that, I don't mean to be too argumentative here, but exactly one year ago, the Attorney General was in court saying exactly what we're saying. It is too late to change the rules. The state Attorney General was arguing that a trial court could not change the state senate districts to comply with the Constitution because it was too late and it's exactly the same timetable. So I would hope that the Attorney General would use its discretion and not appeal. I suspect their client, the legislature, will convince them otherwise, but we certainly hope so. If, if I may, let, let me just say how much I appreciate this commission, the chair, the director. Serving on this commission is a heavy lift in normal times, and these are not normal times. I also want to thank, and others have said it already, but the director and Mr. Claxton and the entire team, I've gotten to know them all, they have been running at a dead sprint, night and day, weekends, 24/7, literally, since March 9th. And their professionalism, their dedication, their sense of public service is inspiring to me. So I just wanted to make it clear how much I appreciate all of, all of you.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate that. All right, so, Vice Chair.
I, I still, so, sitting next to the attorney, I'm, I was reading this, and I guess I just, as I, as I do read it, it says, "Upon approval of the council districts by the planning commission, the Metro Council is currently constituted shall approve." So it, it does make it sound like we're, we're giving approval. I mean, are these maps okay? Yes. But do I think either one of them should go forward? No. I mean, so I guess I just, kind of where Commissioner Clifton was, is like, I don't want this, like, my endorsement that they should pick one of these, I just think these are two maps that would work.
Well, unfortunately, we're running out of time, Vice Chair, and, you know, I think that our obligation, you know, we're, we're under the gun.
Yeah, no, I mean, I agree that we approved this, but I guess I was sort of splitting hairs with the, the terminology. It's, it's a approval that these maps can work, but it's not necessarily any kind of suggestion that I think these are the two best ones that they should operate under.
I think I heard the question from Commissioner Clifton, I think, and maybe from you also. What we're asking for you to do is approve these two maps to send to council to recommend. I believe I heard Commissioner Clifton saying, are, are we then sending a message from the planning commission to the council that they must act even though the state doesn't require them to? No. We're just saying we recommend these two maps, that they meet the redistricting criteria. That's, it's not, is that, does that answer your question? All right, okay, okay, good.
All right. So, we're ready for a motion? Commissioner Haynes?
I'll move approval of staff's recommendation.
So, let me, so Commissioner Haynes, I.
As amended with.
So we'll do each proposal, so the, the first would be a motion for proposal 15B with the amendments.
I will move approval of 15B with the amendments.
Which were handed out to, to you all, and that is 15-1 Brick Church Lane and 17-2 the multi-area district. So that's a proper motion. Is there a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Those no, ayes have it. Now the next one would be for 17B.
I will move approval of staff's recommendation of 17B with the amendments.
And the amendments are 17-1 Sanders Lane, 17-2 Haywood, and 17-3 Millridge Park. That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Those no, ayes have it, and both 15B and 17B are approved. And so, that leads us to, any other comments from Director Kemp?
Just thanks again to you all for being here, and I will echo for the team. Rochelle and George Roker worked with Mr. Claxton and got support from all the divisions, and I thank them for their hard work and their competency, so.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? We're adjourned.